I am showing six o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the city council business meeting of Tuesday, April 22. If you would please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Lonnie, could we get a roll call of officers, please?
Westwood?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Daniels?
Here.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Here.
Rude?
Here.
Hupin?
All right, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion from council member, Conley, a second from council member Daniels. I don't have my cheat sheet. All right. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels? Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
All right. I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes. We've got three separate sets of minutes to adopt. I'll leave it to motioners' preference if we want to do that with one or with multiple.
I move to adopt the minutes of March 25th, April 8th, and April 10th, 2025.
All right. I have a motion to adopt all three sets of minutes from council member Ronnie, a second from council member Rude. Any discussion?
I was curious on April 8th, page two, on ordinance 970. I think it was the second reading because we had the first reading on March 25th. This is for the international fire code.
Did I say what's the second reading?
April 8th.
Oh, up at the top is where you're looking, sorry.
Yeah.
On the motion.
I'm looking again and saying.
Sorry.
Okay. I'll see her. I see her one. Anyway, so that was the one correction on the April 8th.
Is there an amendment required? I missed that, or is it?
Yes, we need to amend April 8th to the second reading for the fire in the bold.
That's part of the agenda, right? That's not really.
Yeah, that would just need, don't put typing error on.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, fine.
But we can make, yeah, that'll be made any other corrections that were identified. Hearing none, can I get a vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
All right, thank you. For mayor's report, I feel like it's a little bit slim and maybe because we've got a particular project that has been.
Got you.
Excuse me. Am I double sneezing or choose? I'm a little bit nervous. Our cycles have been pretty much taken up on a couple of different projects that are lining up in the channels and making sure that they were ready to go. Probably the most immediate is the bank reconstruction. We cleared all the final hurdles and everything we need to start the permit process. There will be an ad in the paper on Thursday. That opens up a 15-day process. Anticipating that there's nothing there that can't be dealt with, we'll have to deal with any responses that come up from that. But that puts that construction down in the neighborhood of 9th, 10th, and Cooper beginning around May 9th. And the contractor is still telling us that they believe they can have the significant portions of that done before the high water gets here. So I think they're starting at the, my understanding is they're starting at the south side because that's where it's going to be the most impacted. And the spots that they're the most nervous about high water impacting, of course, that doesn't guarantee when high water gets here. But second week of June does have a Friday the 13th issue, I'm just saying, so.
It does.
I appreciate their optimism and willingness to do that. The other one, that is not quite completely done, but we're clearing it. The 16-inch bypass is actually going out for bid this week. One of the issues that we've discovered in our planning documents as we put that together is we actually have a couple of different places in the city where there are city streets that are not actually city streets. There is pavement and water and utilities on private land. And so we have those, just so the council knows. We have those coming in, but we will be initiating a purchase that either provides an easement or parts of the land where our roads and our utilities go. And so while that's not done, it's far enough along that I anticipate it will not get in the way of the project. So, but also a heads up that there may be some council action involved in some of those. Just reminder to everybody that our esteemed council member Doug Miller will be leaving us. And so in the last paper, there's an ad for an opening in Ward 1, which is north of IGA and west of 212.
North of 8th Street.
Pardon?
North of 8th Street.
North of 8th Street, yes. And west, that's a newly adjusted line. And that is going to be for the remainder of that term. And Doug is just a few months into his second term, so that's basically a year and a half opening position that's out there. If you would get those letters of interest into Lonnie by May 8th. Our anticipation is that we'll, council will select that ward member at that first meeting in May. We have planning documents out online still, so we have our growth policy, which is currently in review at the planning board, but it will be coming to the city. We have our downtown master plan, which is being worked on still. And we also have our CIP capital improvements plan that is out on the website. Those three documents kind of ultimately define what the future state of our city is. And then we use that as we put all the other things into place, so zoning regulations, et cetera. And so there will be official public hearings on that, but we welcome public input throughout that entire process. The other thing is applications for lifeguard. We are still, we have several lifeguards hired, but I think my understanding is they could still use five or six more. Just make sure they have adequate coverage and particularly when the pool gets full. So go on the website or reach out to the front office. If you know, if you're interested, if you know somebody who would be interested and a good match for that, please do that. That's kind of all I was able to put together as far as notes. Can you think of anything else from updates?
No RFPs yet.
Oh, RFPs on trash? Thank you. So the RFPs, that's a good one, thank you. So the RFPs for trash, we have received some, a couple of helpful or hopeful correspondence. One of them who is putting together some pretty elaborated options for recycling possibilities. And they wanted some additional time. And then there's a new company that's entering the fray from Wyoming is where they're based. And so there's some paperwork that they need to go through for Montana. Anyway, the RFP date came and went, and so we extended that through the end of May. And we are anticipating we will get those, or we ran it again, or however you want to say it. So we've got that through the end of the month. Anything else from council?
Is there any movement on the Eagles now?
It was submitted. We've not heard anything more. So what I can offer is that it was submitted for a couple of different funds. One of them is called BRIC. My understanding is those BRIC dollars have gone away, so it will just be eligible under the FEMA or the secondary funding source. But we kind of knew that going in, which is why we submitted it for a couple of different funding sources. But I anticipate that'll still be a while before we hear about that. All right, thank you. Hearing that, what let's do is we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. This is the public's opportunity to address the council on anything they'd like. We've changed this. It used to be that this first one was for things that were on the agenda. And the one at the end of the meeting was for things not on the agenda. But in recognition that people's schedules maybe allow them to hit one or the other, it's just a public comment on anything. If you would please address your comments to me. And then you'll have three minutes to speak about anything that's within the council's purview. The other thing I'll add is that as we have action items on the agenda, we will also do a public comment on all action items before we take comments. So with that, I'll go ahead and open the public comment period. And I'll start in the room and see if there's anyone who has anything they'd like to say. Not seeing anything, I will go to online. If you're online and would like to make a comment, if you could start by turning on your camera or at the very least unmuting so that we can see that there's an interested party, we'll go from there. Seeing none, no action, going twice, and three times make it to official, we'll go ahead and proceed with the meeting. Thank you. The first thing on the agenda is the parks board appointment. When it rains, it pours. This is something we had listed for quite a while and got no response on. And then when we listed it, we actually got three applications, all of which were pretty good. Of the three that were there, I ruled two of them as eligible. I left a message with Shelley based on her letter that was included in her address. My determination was that she's more than five miles outside of the city limit. So we are allowed to have two of the park members that are within a five-mile zone of the city, but she didn't meet that requirement. So the other two, I've had an opportunity to chat to. I talked to Roger and got Roger's input. And I also had, well, several sources of input. But what I'd like to do is ask the council to confirm my selection of Luke Russell to the planning board. He's attended the meetings. He's been involved with BRTA. We got some really positive feedback from trails and also from existing park board members that have worked with him. So I feel very comfortable putting his name forward as my recommendation. Can I, can somebody make a motion?
I remove to accept the mayor's appointment of Luke Russell to the parks board.
My second.
All right, I have a motion from council member Conley, a second from council member Ronnie. Any input from the table or discussion before we go?
I'd be happy with either man, so I'll, that's okay with me.
I just appreciate that we had three great people step up and want to volunteer.
It was actually fantastic and wonderful, so it was a lovely dilemma to have. I anticipate that we'll probably hear from some of them again. And I've actually encouraged them to continue to be involved and look for opportunities, so I welcome that. All right, let's go ahead and do a vote on that.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. I will entertain a motion for ordinance 971. And if the motioner would make sure to include first reading as part of that motion.
I move to approve ordinance 971 and ordinance of the city of Red Lodge, Montana, amending Title V, Chapter 2 of the Red Lodge City Code concerning the police commission. First reading.
Public hearing and first reading, okay.
Public hearing and first reading.
And do I have a second?
A second.
All right, I have a motion from council member Conley, a second from council member Rude. Before we go to the public for public hearing and discussion, discussion at the table, please.
Basically, what we did with this is we simply agreed to be governed by Montana State. They have very strict things that a police commission can do and cannot do. And rather than change ours every time they change theirs, it seems easier just to say that the city of Red Lodge hereby adopts Montana Code annotated section. And that seemed to be the simplest way.
So in addition to the duties, there was a change in the terms of the office. And currently, because we have different ordinances at the local level, they supersede what's at the state. So this will change it, so future appointments will follow the state guidelines. Will not impact anybody in their current position. Any other discussion at the table? All right, hearing none. This being a public hearing, I will go ahead and open for discussion from the public. We'll start again in the room. Not seeing anybody stepping up to the podium to introduce themselves. We'll go to online. Going twice, and three times, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this back to the table. Any further discussion?
I think the only other thing that was in the state that we didn't have is that a member of the commission would expire every year. So that one year, you only have one member that needs to be appointed. Then the next year, another member, and, you know, they're staggered. And we didn't have that.
Okay, we'll have to figure out how to maybe get to that staggered intent.
We will have to figure out how to get to that staggered from where we are now.
All right.
It's a lot.
They want?
Nothing.
Okay. All right, hearing no further discussion. Can we get a vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for resolution 3689.
Fine. I move to approve resolution number 3689, a resolution of the city council of the city of Red Lodge, Montana, directing the planning board to review zoning designations and regulations for marijuana businesses in the city limits.
All right, I have a motion from council member Conley and a second from council member Daniels. Discussion at the table.
Well, I know that the state says that we, and the county, so that we can have dispensaries, manufacturers, transporters, testing labs, and cultivators. And so what we were looking at here was to possibly eliminate cultivators since Red Lodge doesn't really have any ag ground. That would work well with it. And so the planning board needs to look at the zoning quite a bit.
If I may?
Yes.
Can I add to that?
Please.
So the ordinance that was passed when it went to the voters was deemed that it qualified all of the seven lines of business available with marijuana. This resolution is actually just to have the planning board go back and revisit the zoning. My understanding has been that that was the intent and it just never went back to zoning from there. It will not currently address whether we will not allow commercial cultivation and growers within the city limits. That is deemed as, that is deemed as a voter action, so it can only be undone by a voter. So right now, we will be currently voting and planning for that. There is, we have had the attorney draft up some draft language to make it, put it to the voters of whether we want to exclude commercial growing operations within city limits.
And manufacturing.
Pardon?
And manufacturing.
I think it was just commercial growing.
No, it was both. It was both cultivating and.
I think it was commercial cultivating and grow operations is what it says.
But manufacturing is different.
Yeah, and that was, that was based on the input of our local businesses that they thought that would be the one that would have the most negative impact. I think, anyway. There was a question, there was a question as to whether we wanted to open that can of worms. And council, the standing committee has said yes, and so it'll be, that'll be in standing committee next time. And then we've got plenty of time to visit that. So that question about commercial grow operations is not tied to this resolution.
This is just directing the planning board.
This is directing, that was a lot of words to answer a really short question. I apologize.
You did it well, though.
You're right, it was, but that wasn't what we were trying to talk about.
This is just sending it to the planning board.
And you guys can change that if you want to. So that'll be a future item that is up for discussion for council to put a resolution for that. So this will just be to direct it to the zoning, to the planning board for possibly revisiting zoning regulations. Was there any further questions at the table before we open this up for audience discussion? All right, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and open it to the audience. Same rules, if you address your comments to me, please, in three minutes. Looking to the room. Seeing none, going to online. Seeing none there, we'll go ahead and, going twice, going three times, and we'll close the public hearing on resolution 3689. Any further discussion at the table? All right, can we get a vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. I will entertain a motion for ordinance 972.
I move to table ordinance 972 until the, what is it, the May?
May 13th.
May 13th meeting.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to table ordinance 972 and a second from council member Ronnie and a second from council member Conley. Let's go ahead and have discussion on that and have you explain your thinking.
The reason why, when we met this morning, we just had a couple of changes. So we thought we were going to be able to proceed. Basically, in Title IV, we added that the weighted application, shall use the weighted application process. We added set by resolution so that the application would be approved by council. And then we also added at the bottom of that Title IV, Chapter 5, Section 2, that the resolution shall also establish a timeframe to allow other businesses to potentially submit competing applications. So we just basically added that resolution language in there and we thought we were going to be okay. And then we also added that if, in Title IV, Chapter 5, Section 3, that if there's any deviation, alteration, change in location that from the submitted and approved application on file with the city, this is for, that it would submit the business to an open application process. We just wanted them to know that if they moved or changed anything, they would go back against that open application. And so we thought we were all fine and well, but because we're so strict on this that if you move, it opens it up to this whole open application process. But we just directed the planning board to rezone and look at the zoning. And so if by chance, one of our two licensed places all of a sudden becomes a place that is no longer eligible for zoning, granted, they'd be grandfathered in and they could stay there. But we wanted an out for them where they could still keep their license without having to reapply if they're moving to a better zoned application. So we added Title IV, and this is just not, has not been run by Denison, which is why we don't want to vote on it tonight. But basically, we're saying, should an existing marijuana business reside at a location that has been rezoned by the city and is now no longer in an allowed use at that location, that marijuana business may apply to relocate to a new allowed use location through a closed application process. So they won't risk their registration and their ability to do business in Red Lodge. Because we don't want to de-incentivize them to move to another place that the city actually would like them to be. So if that makes sense, that's why we're tabling it.
They would have their choice to either stay in their current location grandfathered or move to another location within zoning without having to risk losing it.
With appropriate zoning.
Right, yeah.
So we wanted them, we didn't want to, we wanted to allow them that opportunity and not de-incentivize them that they have to stay there.
So discussion at the table on the direction that's going?
The only note that I had is at the top, it should have, it should point out that it's Title IV, you know, that should be in the title.
In the title?
Yeah.
Okay.
Add notation information.
On Title IV, Chapter 5, Section 1, the last sentence, you have testing, comma, laboratory. It's a testing laboratory. Those aren't separate? I went online to see what the breakout is.
Testing laboratory, okay. Okay.
Okay, are there questions in content not editing? Council member Rude?
This is editing, not content.
Oh, it's an editing one? So questions on content?
No.
Yeah.
All right, I'll go ahead and welcome editing, too.
Title IV, Chapter 5, Section 5 is repeated. At the top of the second page, it says four, five, and five, revocation.
So, sorry, I just, they just need to re, need to renumber.
Just another number.
Yes, and that was me.
That was a byproduct of the edit today.
The final edit here, yes.
Okay, I didn't have that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
No, because I added a whole nother title there.
Any other comments from the table? I know that, well, actually, it's up for action even as being tabled as an action. So as such, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public discussion. So this public comment is limited to the ordinance at hand, ordinance 972. The current motion on the table is to table this until the next meeting to allow public an opportunity to review those changes and comment and think about those and also to allow council an opportunity to weigh in on those.
And the city attorney.
That would be council, I meant council with an I, not an E, sorry. Yeah, so give the city attorney an opportunity to weigh on those. So the floor is now open for public input regarding ordinance 972. I'll go to the chamber first. Seeing no action, we'll go to online. Going twice, going three times, we'll bring it back to the table. Any further discussion? So the motion on the floor is to table ordinance 972, public hearing and first reading to the May 13th meeting. Any further discussion, is there a, yes, sir? All right, we'll go ahead and do a vote.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude? Yes.
All right, the motion to table carries. Thank you. That concludes the work session of the city council meeting. At this point, what we do is we'll switch over to council work session, which is where council discusses things that are going to be coming up on the agenda in the future. It's part of how we make sure the public has lots of opportunity to hear and comment. And it makes for the first part of the meeting being really boring, which is a lovely thing. So with that, let's go ahead and start out, give me just a second to pull the right paperwork to the top. Let's go to council chair Conley for public health and safety update.
Okay, we spoke this morning briefly about the ordinance 941 that we amended requiring dumpsters. I did talk to a gal from our trash company, which I can never remember, Republic, and said that we were talking about amending our ordinance to require all dumpsters to be bear-proof with metal lids. And she said that in our area, all dumpsters coming from them should have metal lids. So at the last council meeting, we had this discussion of construction dumpsters and construction trailers. And I think that we dropped the word construction. And instead of having it say, and functional lids, we just said covers to be secure. We don't need closed and secure. So those minor changes were made in 941. And the committee felt it was ready to come to the city council to take a look at. Does anybody have any second thoughts on dumpsters?
Council member Rude, go ahead.
Just a second. I've got to read this again, just a minute. I guess I need to ask you, that Republic said metal for dumpsters.
That's a.
I've got a dumpster in front of my house and it just has a chain link fence.
It didn't come from Republic.
And it came from Republic.
She told me that in our area, they're all supposed to have metal.
A chain link is metal.
Yeah, I was going to say, chain link is metal.
You might be talking about two different things. There's dumpsters and then there's the roll-offs. The roll-offs are the bigger ones with the chain link on the top.
That's what I have, right there.
Those are roll-offs. A dumpster is what we have in the back in our alley in most of the.
Oh, great. That's another word.
And I, well, and I thought I recall the distinction because the reason that dumpsters were added initially was a concern about blowing trash. And so my understanding from the previous conversations was that dumpsters needed to be covered so, at the end of the day, so that.
You mean a trailer, like a.
Well, yeah, basically, something that contains trash.
Those are roll-off trailers. Those are trailers, those are construction trailers.
Something that holds trash needs to be covered so it doesn't blow away at the end of the night. And there was a second element that said if it, if there were attractants in the can, then it need to be bear resistant. I don't think, I don't remember that, I guess it's council's discretion, but do you want all dumpsters to be bear resistant or is it all dumpsters are covered and only the ones that have attractants are bear resistant? And that's council's call, not mine.
Well, A covers the ones that are attract bears. But as far as dumpsters go, we just said must be stored in a bear resistant dumpster.
Oh, boy.
Attractants must be stored in a bear resistant dumpster.
Honestly, my only concern about this whole thing has to do with our downtown businesses on really busy weekends and the dumpster lids will not close because they're overflowing. Are we gonna go around and give every business downtown over the Fourth of July weekend a ticket? Or are we gonna or require them to keep all their trash inside the business? I mean, you can't, it's not.
I would argue that the basis behind this is public health and safety.
And I get that, but.
And in order to maintain that public health and safety, we want to discourage bear activity. So do they need larger dumpsters? Do they need more frequent pickup dates? What is the?
It's literally the month of July. I mean, it's, and.
Is it too late to get in the RFP to come more often in July?
That the business owners pay for their own trash removal, the city does not.
No, but we set the ordinances that tell them what level of trash service they need to maintain.
Not for the business owners, you don't.
The business owners don't live within the city where this ordinance doesn't impact business owners?
No, I'm saying we contract with Republic Services for our trash removal.
Right, and they.
And they only, they come to most businesses once a week. Some of the restaurants, they come up to three times a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. But they're not gonna come Sunday morning after Friday and Saturday night, huge, whatever. They don't do Sunday delivery, Sunday trash removal.
So my comment was council's role is to set what the requirements are and then, to your point, the businesses negotiate or work with their provider to meet those. So whether it's emptied on Saturday and then Monday, Saturday so that they're empty on Sunday. But council's role is to set what those ordinances are. Not, we're not, we're not providing them that service, but we're saying, but what level of trash do we want them to do in the interest of public health and safety?
And that they need to do whatever it takes to make those trash resistant, bear resistant.
But, but, that's what we're here for, right?
Right, yeah, no, I just think that it's.
Where to draw that line?
I think it's, it's a lot, I mean, every other month, it's fine. You know, it's just July when we have all of our big events in town. And the city, we have our own issues with our containers downtown on some of those big event weekends, you know, where we have overflowing trash. I mean, it's just, it's bipartisan, go ahead, I'm sorry.
But if it's just one month, all more reason to get a special agreement with our garbage person. It's just a month. And even if they brought, you know, they bring those down recycling on town cleanup day. They can bring things down here and.
An additional dumpster?
Something, yeah.
But are we, as the city, gonna require our businesses to do that?
Well, I'm also concerned too, 'cause we have, I mean, I know we got rid of construction or these roll-ons, but. I, you know, to be devil's advocate, I'm a tourist, walking down the street, I see a trash receptacle. I'm not gonna care if it's a construction receptacle or if it's any kind. I'm gonna be like, oh, I'm gonna throw my, I'll throw a pizza box.
I agree.
And that's why you said all dumpsters are bear resistant?
Yes, because someone's gonna throw their old chicken bones in there.
Uh-huh, pizza box or takeaway.
They don't care.
No, I've seen, like, dumpsters like that. I've seen people pull up and dump their house trash in something like that.
Sure.
And that's theft of services, but, I mean, it's like, we can't.
That's another thing we need to tackle, but I think everything needs to have a bear attracted.
It is, I just, and I, I mean, they all have metal lids. It's just, what I'm saying is that there's certain times in the summer where.
But if we had some.
So bears only come in July?
No.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
We can put pies at the beginning of town, no bears allowed.
No, I'm.
What if we did, like, I'm kinda down with Ann where we ask in the month of July to have them set up a trash receptacle so that people who are camping or who are out, instead of, you know, utilizing.
Coming downtown.
Coming downtown and, you know.
Dumping their trash in, like, my dumpster.
Right, in.
I'm filling it up and then I don't have any place to put my trash because people are dumping it.
There is a place for them to dump here, it would eliminate quite a bit of.
And we can communicate to the businesses, we understand this may require some additional effort in July to do that. But I think what it boils down to is continuing something that started in this town many, many years ago, and that is recognizing that we have bears.
Absolutely.
That is a genuine public health concern. Thirteen bears were put down last year.
I would like to know, you know, because it's, the main issue is our restaurants and on those busy weekends, it's absolutely, they're overflowing with garbage. And it's a big bear attractant. But how can, can we figure out a way, can we have that conversation with our restaurant owners on, on can they, you know, go to Republic and ask for different service dates for those busy weekends? I don't know if you can or not.
Or additional dumpster.
There's no room in the alley for extra dumpsters. They're in the alley. Have you driven, I mean, the alley behind.
I'm just sort of the Pollard, there's your.
No, no, behind Pizza Co. and then behind Bogarts. I mean, they're all, there's parking, then there's a dumpster and there's really not room for.
I don't, I don't see how, I mean, I don't, I guess it's something you'd have to take up at the business line, but I feel like.
I just feel we need their input in this because honestly, if you tell, you know, Foster and Logan's, Bogarts, Pizza Co., you know, and then you go down on this side and then you have, you know, Black Canyon and you, I mean, on those busy, busy days in July, their dumpsters are overflowing, period.
It's not just dumpsters, though, like you said, like, it's the downtown, all of the trash.
It's overflowing.
And those are the city's responsibilities, make sure we do that.
But at the same time, I feel like, what, it's, I mean, what are we looking for, having that discussion with Republic or the business owners?
It just seems that we should have an ordinance that requires them to have those dumpsters closed at all times when not being used for disposal of waste. I don't think that we can regulate for special occasions or change our ordinance to cover those.
Our ordinance is not gonna say except July.
Yeah, no, well.
So let me, let me ask the question in the interest of moving things forward. Do we think the next three weeks, as we talked about, we have a bonus week, are an opportunity to discuss that and get that input or do we still wanna put this below the fold going forward and come back with that input before we move it up for action?
Personally, I would like to get that input. I wanna know if it's even doable for these business owners to follow this. I mean, I just, you know, during the summer months when.
Is it doable in July?
Yeah, mainly July, but, you know, I mean, there's just a lot of busy weekends where I've driven back through the alleys and.
But isn't a business owner gonna say, I don't wanna incur additional costs? And no, it's not gonna work.
But, yeah, I just, I mean, it's mainly Sundays when you drive through after a Friday and Saturday that they're packed full or.
I know, but you should get input. I don't know that input is going to help because the input is gonna be, no, we don't want that. We don't wanna have.
Well, I don't think it's that they don't want it, it's like, can they actually follow this? That's what my question is.
Well, if it's in an ordinance.
But there's no way for them to follow it. Where are they gonna put the gra, the trash? That's what I'm asking. You know, it's Friday, Saturday, and their pickup's Monday, so all day Sunday, the garbage bin is overflowing.
Okay, do bears come into town in July in the alleys? Like, three in the morning or four in the morn, I mean, I.
I know, I know they, they do in other areas, I don't know if they do, but they go everywhere.
Yeah, I figure they do, I was gonna ask.
Yeah, I figure they go everywhere.
Okay, okay, let me, let me do a quick strong pull. I'll start down with Councilmember Daniels. Move this to action next week or delay it?
I, I mean, we have the time to delay it, so, yeah, I don't, I don't mind delaying it.
Okay, Councilmember Conley? Thank you. The beauty page.
I know.
I don't think that we're going to gain anything by delaying it, but if the group feels that we should delay it, that's fine. I can talk to Tom Coates and get a little bit of input from him since he's got, you know, many restaurants and find out whether, you know, if it's been a problem for them in the past and if they've talked to Republic to find out whether they can change the schedule.
Councilmember Lenny?
I just want more input before we vote on, before it becomes an action item.
Okay, Councilmember Ruth?
Well, yeah, a lot of things. Maybe July is anecdotal and maybe we need it for two weeks in August, too. So I don't wanna get.
Right, yeah, no, don't.
Right.
Right.
But why not? Hire some kids, two boys, get a truck that goes up and down the alleys the whole month of July on Friday and Saturday night and then take the trash out to where the dumpsters are gonna be out by the recycling center. That sounds like a great job for some kids, to get a truck, throw the trash in there. But the trash has to be prepared, I mean, it can't, it can't be a mess, but, you know.
I, when I hear that, it's some additional things we can do from a city standpoint, from, and quite frankly, from an administration standpoint. I, I think those are in addition to.
But I don't know, I, I don't go downtown on Fourth of July. I don't know how bad it is, but it's anecdotal, but we can look at it.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, I, I agree with you. I guess what I'm saying is I don't think that this is going to fix the problem of overflowing dumpsters. I think we have to look at, no, I think we have to look at other solutions outside the box, like Ann just said.
All right, so you also said July's the month. Do you think this would fit for every month other than July?
I think summer's an issue. July is our busiest month downtown. August can be busy as well, but July's when we have all the events when, you know, you have the Fourth of July, we have, you know, 10,000 people downtown, we have the Fairteef rally, we have the car show.
Is, are you saying we need two ordinances, one for summer and one for the rest of the year?
No, I'm just saying that I don't think that this is enforceable as written.
I, I think there's, there's a diff, I think it's one ordinance, but maybe two different levels of effort required to meet the requirements of the enforce, of the ordinance.
Well, I think the first thing we need to find out is Republic offers different day service, multi-day service. And I think we should ask, okay, well, then, then why ask Tom? I mean, if it's available, tell the business owners you have to have that cleaned up. If you need a dumpster, come get picked up every day.
They don't do it on Sundays.
Okay, every day but Sunday. If, if, if Republican serves us, these businesses, anytime, then we should enforce this ordinance.
My astute powers of observation tell me that there's still a little bit room for, to discuss this before we put it for action. I would, I would like to add, for notes, as this goes back to the standing committee, and it can, it can be, it can be to the full council next time, but I think if you heard the additional concerns or complaints, you know what to address before we move it up to the action portion of the meeting. Some of the things that I'm reminded of as I listen to this conversation is I would like to see this ordinance include that it is an infraction to have an overflowing dumpster and it's an infraction to disable the locking mechanism on a dumpster. I know we have issues where people like tape their dumpsters, they put duct tape on them so their dumpsters can't close. That doesn't really work for bears, or it works really well for bears. It doesn't work for keeping the bears out and protecting the people and the bears. So those are, those are two things that I think as you're revisiting, I would like to see articulated in there, is overflowing and disabling. Councilmember Ruth?
Another, another thing we could do is get extra, like, dumpsters set in place closer in the alleys that people can, the restaurants can use instead of having to go out there. But like at Rod Bastian, I hate to say this 'cause he's not here, but for instance, Rod Bastian's parking lot behind Magpie and the, um, Parry Riddle.
But are you talking about a city responsibility provide, so?
Yes.
We provide, we provide dumpsters along the sidewalk, but we don't provide dumpsters to restaurants.
Well, we're putting it in the place just for July and they, if this is a real problem, I just, like I say, I don't get out enough. But I, why couldn't we just put, like, we put extra porta potties places? We put.
But those are city services that we provide to residents or visitors, not to, not to businesses directly.
Well, I like it, just thinking outside the box.
I'm okay with that. As long as the box is bear-proof and trucked.
I'm sure there are other towns, other cities that do these special things in the summer 'cause you, 'cause you're over, it's just not normal.
Right. I know, we have, we have, July is the reason why we can have a lot of the things that we have in Red Lodge because of the resort tax and the income that comes in to our businesses and to Red Lodge as a whole for our economy. I mean, and I feel the, the city does have some responsibility where, where we could help with resort tax money for some of these, you know, ideas.
You know, when you, when you walk down the sidewalks on Saturday morning or Sunday morning, it's just gross. Because the ice cream is on top of the, you know, it's just.
Oh, yeah, no.
And if that city dumpsters, that's, that's on me and staff to address those. And I think we absolutely need to, before we can enforce anything anywhere, we need to make sure we're adhering to it.
Just like the super duper pooper scoopers, you know, they go clean up after, they all have fun. Right?
Yes, absolutely.
But I, my concern is, my concern is just I don't want to, this is my inner Doug coming out. I don't want to get into business, the city is not in the business of subsidizing businesses to have a really good weekend.
No.
That's their responsibility, not ours. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
All right, I just wanna be good for the city, but I'm just thinking, I, well, no.
That's what this is for.
Yeah, thinking about the trash, basically, like, the trash can.
I just think, yeah, that as a business owner, if I knew there was an ordinance, I would go out of my way to make sure that the dumpster was closed and locked.
So the last day.
Especially the first time you get a ticket.
Especially when it costs you money.
Well, the last, I don't believe that they offer a Saturday service. They only offer Friday morning services. So what happens is many of the restaurants do Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so they get that Friday morning service. But with a busy Friday, a busy Saturday, the dumpsters can be full and overflowing by the time they get their Monday morning service, is all I'm saying. I don't know if, and that's what we need more information on. We need to know if it's even viable for them to be able to meet these requirements. You know, if they're getting a Friday morning service and their next one's not till Monday morning.
I'm, I'm not gonna worry about it because as I look at this ordinance, it doesn't tell me that I have to pay a fine to set by a resolution.
That would be a resolution.
But this doesn't say the fines will be set by resolution. It probably should say that it should be set by resolution.
I just put it on the side.
Officially tabled, let's go, move on.
Are, are we, so that's, we're remanding that back to council or to standing committee? Are you guys still comfortable?
And I'm gonna make some phone calls in the next three weeks.
Right, thanks, Ann, I appreciate you.
All right, going back to Council Chair, or Standing Committee Chair Conley.
On Ordinance 910, the committee reviewed, this is on the snow ordinance. The committee reviewed our current snow ordinance and proposed a few changes to it. One of the changes was it currently exempts the sidewalks north of the traffic circle. But this morning, we discovered that the city actually clears the sidewalks south of downtown. They're cleared by the city. So it seemed that everybody should be treated the same. So if the city continues to clear the snow on the south end of town, we propose that they should also clear the sidewalks north of the traffic circle as well. The city doesn't do anything on the north, but they do on the south.
On the one side of the south.
You mean on where there's a sidewalk?
By the entrance?
They don't do both sides, is what you said.
So I have not had a chance to research what the logic is as far as scalable and repeatable about why we are doing sidewalks on the south side of town and not in the business. So, so I have not had a chance to research what the logic is as far as scalable and repeatable about why we are doing sidewalks on the south side of town and not in the business district and not on the north end, so I don't have an answer for that yet. Um, but, but, but that, how did that fit into the, to the ordinance discussion?
Well, we, we, well, we were going to remove that whole section about exempting the sidewalks, which would make the responsibility to the adjacent business uh, to have the sidewalks cleared, and then when we discovered that the city was, was doing that on the south end of town, uh, we just wanted to be able to treat everybody the same. It's one thing downtown, so, um, we're kind of in a impasse there, waiting for the mayor to discover why we're doing it south.
From my understanding, I think, I remember a conversation, and you told me on that, that I believe he was just doing it because he knew how much people like to walk and for safety reasons, he just, you know, it was quick.
And you could do the whole sidewalk, then people do like to walk.
Yeah, and that's what he, for the most part, he does, he doesn't do my side, he does the other side.
But there's one side that's safe, so that was one of the, uh, proposals that we did, discussed this morning. Um, in addition, a suggestion was made by Public Works that we include a, uh, section in there that says, uh, the snow shall not be moved from one parcel to another parcel. And Rod Bastian pointed out that we should add on there that it's not, to move it to another parcel not owned by the same entity. In other words, you can't take your snow and put it on your neighbor's, whether it's residential or, uh, downtown. And that is not in our snow ordinance at all, so we thought that-
I think part of that was to keep it from being piled up by stop signs and corners and intersections and creating safety hazards.
Right, well, well, and, and good-
Or blocking the neighbor's parking area.
Or how about good neighbor, how about a good neighbor policy, not piling your snow on your neighbor's area? And, um, so we thought that, that that was an interesting thing to propose to the City Council. Uh, and lastly, on the section on penalties, we have a big section in there on penalties.
An accompanying resolution?
Right, that we were going to take them out, definitely out of the ordinance and do it that it's set by resolution. Uh, because currently, we have the first, actually, in, in the wording, it says, the first offense gets a written warning and after twenty-four hours, the city can remove the snow and bill the owner, that's what it says in the verbiage. But below, it says that, that first they get the warning, then they get a fifty dollar fine, the third offense, they get a hundred dollar fine, and then the fourth time, four times, uh, it says, fourth or subsequent offenses within a two-year period would constitute maintaining a public nuisance.
That's when we started giggling.
That's when we got a little crazy that suddenly we're going to count offenses in a two-year period, so that it goes in a two-year-
Twenty offenses.
That is maintaining a public nuisance according to Montana code annotated, so, um, it's gonna, we're definitely, I, I think that, that the group, which is two today, uh, wanted to talk to the City Council and see if we should stick with a written warning, after twenty-four hours, the city may remove the snow and bill the owner. That's what it, it also has that language, so it, it's kind of conflicting to start with, so obviously it needs to come out anyway.
So, so, wait, wait, what's conflicting about that?
Well, in the verbiage, it says that the, after the first, after the first offense, you get a written warning, but after twenty-four hours, the city can remove and bill the owner, okay? It says that in the verbiage, but then below, when you're looking at the fines process, yeah, the A B C D.
So, Sandy, I think what that means, and it may not spell that outright, the first offense, you get a warning, after twenty-four hours, the city may remove it. The next time your sidewalk is crap, you get, it's a, it's a second offense, and you get, it, it's not a warning anymore, you get a fine, and after twenty-four hours, the city can remove it.
So, it's both?
The next time, in, you know, you, you leave your snow out, you, it's a third, you know, it, it, it gets bigger and bigger, is what it is.
It's not the same, it's not-
It's not the same storm, okay?
That's really good, sorry, that was really good.
Yeah.
So, it's not the same storm.
Right.
Okay, so that's why it was written that way, well, we also thought the fifty dollar fine was kind of funny, because that's how much it costs you to have the snow removed from a fifty foot.
But you're also gonna have to pay for the snow to be removed. Fifty dollar fine.
What are the questions and guidance-
We'll have to figure this out later resolution.
What are the questions and guidance you would like from the council as a whole to help you bring this forward?
Well, that was an interesting thing we didn't think of, we were thinking it was the same offense, the way this was written, it says first offense, second offense. So, it, now it makes a little more sense.
Yeah, and you could add, like, during the same calendar year if you wanted, you know, so, or you could say, I mean, it could be, um, forever, you know, it, it's, I mean, I guess you could spell that out there.
Or you're, you're wanting to change the wording so it says the first storm, second storm?
No, no, I would just-
First, snowy ban?
No, just say something like the, the, your first warning from, what, October first to, or September first through May first. I know, May, well, you know, April, May, May first, whatever, you wanna say, May thirty-first, you can get measurable snow where we actually have to get out and remove it. Um, you know, you could say that, uh, snow calendar year is considered September first through May thirty-first. And during this, you know, timeframe, if you have a first offense, you'll get a warning, uh, um, second offense, the second offense is that, and then at the bottom, you could say, after twenty-four hours of receiving your warning, noted, or your fine, whatever, the city may come in and remove the snow and you will have to pay.
I, I like that version, again, going back to the whole logic behind this is public health and safety. So, if we give you a fine, that's theoretically a motivation so that you'll do better next time, but it doesn't solve the problem of ice along Broadway, so, we're gonna go in and take care of it.
We're gonna do it.
Just like we'll go in and mow somebody's little tall grass and, and take care of it, and you get the bill on your taxes.
I would propose that we put it back in the committee to talk about the resolution portion of this, and-
And, and I didn't understand that you were confusion of thinking-
That it was the same offense.
That it was, I, I, I missed that, but you can go back and figure out why the wording is that confused you that way and figure out how to address it.
Yeah, the, the top part is good, the bottom part is, is weird.
Okay, so do you have anything that you need from full council to do that, or do you feel you have the guidance you need?
We'll get together.
I think that we, we have a little more guidance right now, so that will be good, and we'll work on it, uh, does the council, um, and we're waiting anyway to find out whether or not the city will be removing the snow north of the traffic circle from the sidewalk.
And therefore not included in your ordinance?
And not included in the ordinance, exactly.
Okay. All right, any, anything else from public health?
No, we did hear from, uh, Sergeant Landon this morning on some suggestions on nudity and a few other, I know, it was an interesting morning, you missed it.
Suggestions?
Yeah.
Like what, kind of suggestions, like what?
Well, it's-
It's allowed here but not there, or what?
He's written, he wrote up what the, what it currently says and, and what he had liked to see, but it needs to, oh, I shouldn't have said it that way. But it needs, it needs to go, I didn't say that, it needs, we're getting giddy, uh, but it needs to go through Denison before we-
You'll miss that, Doug.
Before we can go through anymore, so it does need to go through Denison, but it was an interesting proposal.
There, there were several sections of code that he looked at, how they were written, so, so again, going back to public health and safety, how do we, A, you make the rule, B, we enforce the rules.
Yes.
He was identifying spots where he thought the language needed to be cleaned up so that they could better-
Well, there's, I, like nudity is, like, you know, going to the bathroom in the alley.
Well, there was more than that, it was, it was lewd gestures, um, apparently, right now, it says that if you have any lewd material, you can't dispose of it.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's-
Councilmember Connolly was unduly, unduly worried and surprised about that particular ordinance, I didn't dig into it.
That if you have, have lewd stuff, you're, you, you have no way to dispose of it, it's against the law.
So, if, you know, there, uh, like a sack of Playboys, for example, I was concerned, like-
You have to keep them.
Well, like, they're collectors items now, I guess, so, like-
Doug, when did I lose this?
It's long gone.
Sandy, we have three weeks, let's get together.
That's all there, that's where we are.
Thank you, public health and safety.
Thank you.
Garbage must be collectible.
Garbage, snow, and nudity.
Ad, ad, admin and finance, and I'll look to Council Chair, or to Committee Chair Ronnie.
Okay, so you're ready for this? All right, um, up for discussion, we have resolution, um, notifying Carpen County to conduct the twenty twenty-five general election by mail ballot. This will be up for action next time, if everyone's okay with it, but basically, every time we have an election, we have to tell the county that we do want it as a mail-in.
We do it at state level, but we as a municipality have to pass, um, our resolution notifying them yes please.
Does it cost us more?
No.
It's actually less than if it was any person.
Really?
Yeah, well, and, and also, it, the price is actually dependent on whether or not there is-
I'm saying we don't get charged if there's something else that goes out.
Yeah, 'cause if they have, if they're sending it out anyway, they pick up the tab.
Yeah, like for the presidential election, those years, we'd never get charged for the general election stuff, but if it ends up just being us out there, then they charge us. It's just our election, so if everyone's okay with that being up for action next time, we'll move that forward.
Okay, now the action next time?
Yes, and then the next one is ordinance number nine, um, let's see, re, oh, I'm sorry, resolution, sorry, I'm on the wrong spot here, to create a separate fund for the EDA grants. Um, it's up for discussion tonight, this is just a bookkeeping, um, to, request, yes, and it's to keep track of the grant. Um, we were awarded a grant in the amount of two million eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand on December thirtieth from the Economic Development Administration grant award. And, um, the match by the city of Red Lodge is required in the amount of seven hundred and seventeen thousand, which funds have our allocated, and so Lonnie is, our, our city clerk is requesting um, for accounting standards board, that we have a separate account. So that our funds don't get convoluted.
Would that be just the outside money that goes into that new account?
That was my question.
Or does our set aside goes into it?
Our match money that's currently budgeted this year will be moved into the-
To hold for next, okay.
To hold until the project starts.
And so it's this one specific grant, one account?
Yeah.
What, what happens at the end of that one, it's no longer needed, does the account dry up and go away?
It may account, it's, it'll be, we have, like-
Just an inactive account?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Questions from the council, or any concerns with moving that forward?
No commingling outside.
It did say, um, passed and adopted at a special session.
Say again, that's in the resolution?
Yeah, at the very bottom.
We can, we can modify that.
Are we having another special session?
No, we're not.
No, we're, we're trying really hard not to.
Okay, yes, so, if everyone's okay, that will be up for action next time.
With, with edits?
With edits, yes.
For special sessions.
Okay, and then next, we have a resolution of intent to award the sixteen inch bypass project for the city of Red Lodge, Montana. This is specifically so that we don't have a special session.
So, in the packet was basically the same form as what we did for the bank reconstruction project, we just highlighted all the blanks and stuff. We have communicated to, um, the, the Great West who's handling the particular project, that we need that information later than Thursday, or it'll be two weeks later before they are able to award it, so they're hopefully going to, uh, be able to get us that information in time and sort of just be those blanks filled in, but we can move forward with it at that point in time.
Good stuff, everyone's okay then?
What is a sixteen inch bypass, you're bypassing what?
That's the one going up to the golf course.
It's the one that goes to the golf, uh, to the west bench without requiring motorized pumps to get it there, so it's gonna be a gravity fed system. When they first built Country Club Estates many years ago, they said, this does not work for fire, fire suppression, you don't have the ability to run two fire hydrants at once, it's not a-
Flow.
It's how much, as soon as you put a pump in, it's a constraint, and so this eliminates that constraint by going to a gravity fed system. So, you can have two fires on two ends of the golf courses at the same time.
And it's been in the work-
But not three.
It's been in the work for years, so we're trying decades, decades, yeah.
It's to solve the flow issue.
This has, this has been on the CIP for decades.
This is the flow issue, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Any, any issues with moving that forward?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
Okay.
And last but not least, out of admin, is a resolution to the City Council to terminate the interlocal agreement for the administration of the Red Lodge Roberts ambulance district. As everyone knows, we used to have this interlocal agreement, um, that formed the Red Lodge Roberts ambulance district, and, um, the voters approved a whole new program. Yeah, district, but I guess it was, yeah.
Last year.
Last year.
Yep.
So, um, this is at request of the county, because the county has to, um, terminate this interlocal agreement, and we're just signing off and saying, yep, go ahead, because we're being covered a different way.
And there's two parts, one of it is waiving a time period in there too, if I recall correctly.
Yes, because normally-
Waive the right, you know-
Waive the right to notice is required into the section, so it just allows you to do it quickly.
And I had a question, um, it says, like, you know, now therefore, whatever, it says, transfer any and all current or future assets, do we have any current or future?
So, it's like if we own ten thousand dollars of a fire truck or an, what is that?
Don't we own a fire truck?
We do own a fire truck.
Yeah, so there, and, and, and there are some assets that are, basically, if it's mid-budget year or anything.
So, we're gonna transfer the ownership of that fire truck to them?
From, from the old district to the new district.
Yes, got it, yeah, I just wanted to know what to, what are assets, and it says, or future assets, so that was kind of like-
And if, and if council would like me to request, um, someone there to speak at that, at the, at the next meeting, I don't know that it's a list, because it's anything and everything, it's just kind of, if they have it, it's still theirs.
But this says future assets, and it's like-
So, this is not happening right into the budget cycle? We can, like I said, we can-
I just wanted to know what future assets, if we, if we terminate-
Well, it's not the city of Red Lodge, it's the Red Lodge Roberts ambulance district, which we're just a part of. It's not the city of Red Lodge's asset, it's the Red Lodge Roberts ambulance district.
So, that ambulance service, to this one?
To the Red Lodge rural fire district, so, that's, it's not what the city owns, it's what is already owned by the Red Lodge Roberts ambulance district.
So, we still have a fire truck? So, we still own a fire truck?
We own several.
Okay.
I think one, but-
We only, the city only owns one.
Oh, really, oh, okay.
We only have one fire truck.
There's, there's lots of stuff down there.
They should let me drive it in the train.
So, we don't, oh, we, the city itself doesn't own it, it was bought after.
Okay, I think that's the case.
So, are there any issues or concerns with moving that forward?
No, okay, perfect.
All right, so that is four items from admin and finance that'll be up for action next time.
The only other thing that we discussed, um, which Dave touched on, was, um, down the road, you will see, um, a resolution to put on the ballot, um, whether, to give the voters the decision whether or not they want to allow cultivation, commercial grow operations in the city limits. But when we talked about that before, we had also added manufacturing, because that would require an industrial part of zoning in order to do the manufacturing part of what's required. You know, where they make the tinctures and the, you know, and they, they do all the, that type of stuff, so I don't know, I guess we'll have to get-
We do have, uh, zoning for light industrial, this is light manufacturing.
My, my, my recol, I didn't remember that, that part of it, um-
We, we, yeah, we had talked about it, we turned to light.
And, and, and the city attorney didn't, obviously, but, but again, you've got a couple of weeks in Standing Committee to get the input.
So, um, yeah, it just, those are the type of things that we were told probably would never come to Red Lodge, because they are big industrial type things with a lot of, um, you know, they have a tendency to, you know, blow up.
And they, so they need larger, larger space?
Basic, yeah.
And they need larger landmass.
I guess, um, it's just, do we want to address that now in front of the voters and let the voters decide on those two issues? They would be lumped together, you know, um, do you want to allow cultivation and commercial, commercial grow operations and manufacturing, or no, we do not? That would be the question before the voters, because we as council cannot decide that, we have to put it in front of the voters for them to decide.
The question is, do we wait until we, the, the planning board looks at zoning?
The election's in November, so, so we, so right now the-
There's no way, it's too late, yeah.
Yeah, right now, the zoning will have to address how to handle those.
I was afraid of that.
Until this is done.
And they have looked at that extensively in the past, and couldn't come up with a place.
Well, and, and cultivation can actually be done in a greenhouse.
And there, and there was, there was one, there was one version of, of input and recommendations that the ordinance under discussion, because it caps it at two, and because those two spots are filled, indirectly, the ballot issue may not be a question, but then it was also raised that we're all gonna die, and so when we're dead, do, do we want to make sure that there's certain types that aren't there that we don't have to accommodate?
Or that, you know, leave it up to the voters to decide if they want it or not.
Do you foresee, um, camps, two different camps, uh, pushing this forward for the election?
At, at this point, the, the, the business owners, both of the business owners in town, have ultimately made the recommendation that we should not have commercial grow. So, so to me, I think their, their backing of that probably eliminates that. Um, the, the question was just to make sure that it said commercial grow, so that people didn't think they couldn't have their plants.
Yeah, yeah, your personal private plants would not be affected by that at all.
You're good, Doug.
Yeah, all three of them.
Oh, yeah, there you go, so that was our last, um, we'll, we'll be, you'll- Oh, yeah, there you go. So that was our last, um, we'll, we'll be, you'll see that in the future here, so.
Alright. And then Yanlu, Lan, yeah, Landus and Planning did not meet this week because it was just, it was known in advance that it was only going to be one person as opposed to known at the last minute. Admin and finance was remarkably productive today with one person there, so.
I know, it was just me.
It was just you?
And Dave and Lonnie.
Okay, any, any other questions for admin?
No, thank you for all that work.
Alright, um, let's go to, to Public Works and look to committee chair Ronny.
Um, well, um, Dave touched on most everything that, um, Mike had in his, uh, report today. Um, just please, everyone, go online and look at the C I P. We did go over, um, the different, uh, tables that he has in there and they're broken down by like water, sewer, parks, and, and they have all the different projects and, um, that are on there, the wish list projects and, um, estimated costs and when they will be done. And there's also, you know, the, uh, city halls in there, the police departments in there. So please go online and review that. We will have, yeah, he's, he's almost, he's been working on the table, so. Um, and, and there, he, he wants input, please, you know, he was changing it up as we were in the meeting today.
So that means we'll need to make sure we get that latest copy up, upwind because that, not everybody's looking at that in the shared document.
Yeah, and, um, I'm not sure what date, but we will have this all in front of council to approve it or to discuss. And, um, I have a feeling it's probably going to be a month or so out.
Yeah, it's six weeks or so, but it also has a public hearing and, and goes with that.
But now, if you, if there's some big beautiful project that you think would be great for Red Lodge, now's the time to get that added to the C I P. Because, you know.
Or consider it. Water rates?
Oh, yes. You want to talk about that? Okay. Water rates.
Just tell people it's coming.
Okay, I will, yes. So we are, um, redoing, um, resolution thirty-five seventy-one, which, uh, sets the water and sewer rates. Um, it's sunsetting June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, every five years, it's up for renewal. Um, the rates are set by COLA currently. And so when we renew it, it will still be set by COLA. Um, the only other thing, um, that we're doing is, um, so currently, um, people are, have been able to buy an irrigation meter, but meters are in extremely short supply, so basically they'd only get charged for the, the water. Um, um, that comes, water and sewer for their main line.
Their sewer would be adjusted and not, they wouldn't pay sewer for stuff that they were using for water in their loans.
Right. I'm like, that would be like a drink in our drinking.
But the meters are in short supply, so.
Yeah, so, um, yes, exactly. So, um, but Mike has come up with a solution and I think it's very, um, I think it's a great solution. Um, what they're going to do is take your average sewer usage from October to May of each year. And then during the summer months, you'll just be charged that average sewer rate. You, and, um, you'll be charged for the full water use, but you won't be charged to treat irrigation water that's not being treated.
That's, that's not going in the sewer.
It's not going in the sewer, yep.
That's a good idea.
So that, that is, that will be in that resolution, uh, moving forward. And, um, he is working on a way to, uh, potentially, um, buy back some of the meters that were installed within the last two years because they're new enough that the city can reuse them. Um, and they would buy those back from the, you know, everything's kind of in the planning stage, but he figured seventy-five percent of what they paid for them and the city would probably help pay for the plumber to go and remove them.
We would, we would contract it, but we would cover that expense with twenty feet of meter.
We don't want that liability of removing, um.
Two hundred and thirty dollars.
Yes, so, um, anyway, uh, that will be up for discussion at the next meeting.
I think, I think it's fair.
Yeah. Did I miss anything?
No, I don't think so.
Dave, did I miss anything? Thought you can interrupt me.
Like I said.
That was it. We're good.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions or comments for Public Works? Alright, um, correspondence, um, there was one that was received after the packets went out, um, that you all have a copy of now, it'll be in the packet next time relating to, uh, the marijuana ordinance.
Can we get invite her to the meeting?
Yes, she was, she was not in this time, um, but, and so that's why that was there. Um, but, uh, anyway, um, any other correspondence? Alright, um.
I do have an additional question.
Okay.
Do you know whether the water rights from Spires has ever been transferred to the city?
I am not aware that it has been completed yet.
Last I checked, it had not. And I know that somewhere in the, maybe the growth policy, it refers to Remington Ranch water rights, and I've never heard of that.
That that was part of the shore?
Well, I'm just saying water rights.
We do have a meeting with, with, with Spires tomorrow, so it'll be a great time to bring that up.
Yes, it would be, yes. And it's not really their fault. It should have been transferred as soon as it became a subdivision, and it wasn't. And then it went to the bank and then the bank to the current owner. And so it's never been transferred way back in the beginning.
We can certainly make that a condition of the incoming subdivision request to be done before it's there, so.
Thank you.
Alright, um, anything else from the table? Alright, at this point, I will go ahead and open it up for public comment, which we chased most of them off.
Now, we have Alastair now.
Alastair.
We'll go ahead and open public comment. We'll first go to the room. Seeing no one there, we'll go to online and ask Alastair if he has any questions.
I know. Now's the chance, Alastair.
Going twice, going three times. We'll go ahead and close the public comment, and, uh, I'll entertain a motion that Doug can make for number twelve.
I propose we're out of here.
Thank you, yay.
Beating it down.
We are going to miss you.